The absence of a gavel, I would like to call this November 19th Board of Alderman Regular Meeting to order. At seven o'clock. The first item on the agenda, I believe the Mayor Thornton sent an email to the Board last week indicating that he is on holiday in California. And Alderman Kramer is Skyping and joining us from Colombia, South America. And because he is not physically present, he cannot run the meeting as well. So, we have placed on the agenda, an action whereby the members present will need to declare the Chair position vacant and proceed to elect a new Chairman by ballot, and that individual will run the meeting tonight. Questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion.
Bola, ma'am?
Motion to declare, to elect a Chairman.
Right.
Do we have any discussion, or what do we do? Do we just vote?
Who was it? Alderman, who?
She's second.
I seconded his.
His motion to declare, okay.
Okay, I don't think a motion's necessary, you've just gotta pick a chairman.
Oh, who is it?
Do we nominate?
Yes.
Save the paper? Okay.
There's Brandon, welcome to the program.
Hey, Brandon.
Where are you, Brandon? Where are you, Brandon?
Seattle.
I just sent you a nomination, Bola.
Okay.
Scintillating television. Yeah.
Did you send it by text? Brandon?
Yes.
Did Brandon send one in?
Alderman Dimmitt?
You got voted off the island.
Wait a minute, if that was the vote, I gotta change my vote.
Would you like to sit in the Mayor's chair? Thank you. That was a four, four-three vote. Alderman Dimmitt.
We ready?
All right.
Would everyone please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
United States of America, and to the public for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Shelley.
Mayor Smith is absent this evening. Have Alderman Dimmitt?
Here.
Alderman Kramer?
Present.
Alderman Leahy?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neal? Alderman Ploufka?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
And Alderman Weggie?
Here.
Next item on the agenda, approval or amendment of the agenda, does any member have any changes to the agenda? Yes, Alderman Leahy.
I have a question on the consent agenda for the firehouse. Just for clarification, I don't want to take it off the agenda, off the consent. Will we have time to ask questions during the consent?
Sure. Thank you, sir. Any objection to approving the agenda by acclamation? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved. Item five, we have no announcements, we have no public hearings. Item seven, citizen comments, anybody in the audience care to address the committee? Now is your time to do so.
Karen Smith on Harrison, this is a logistics question, where do I find this agenda? Cause I'm on the calendar.
If you can come closer.
Continue. Anyone else in the public? In the audience care to address the Board, all right? We'll move on to item eight, Mayor and Alderman reports. I have no report. Alderman Kramer?
No report.
Alderman Leahy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ward Three meeting for the month of November will be next Tuesday night, the 27th, at seven o'clock up here in the Council Chamber. This past Saturday, we had the Boy Scouts of the Greater St. Louis Area Council hosted the scouting for food drive here in the St. Louis area. And in the Brentwood group, we'd like to say thank you to the City of Brentwood for making the firehouse bays here available for us on Saturday. I'd like to thank the Brentwood Parks and Recreation and the Brentwood Public Works Group for helping us get the fire bay ready so that we could have a good program. This year, the Brentwood area collected 360 boxes of food in the area. The Greater St. Louis Area Council collected just under 2 million canned goods for scouting. You can still donate to the scouting for food this week by dropping off any canned goods that you would like at the local Mayor's Goodwill store. There is one here in Brentwood right on Manchester Road. We'd like to thank them also for helping underwrite a lot of the cost of making scouting for food possible. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Leahy. Alderman Lockmiller?
Thank you. Last Wednesday, we had our Public Works Committee meeting, we just, some of the things are on the agenda. Some of the issues we took up was single stream recycling, the sewer lateral revisions, and some RFP on a piece of equipment. I'd like to thank Public Works for the great job they did on snow removal. Nice to get up in the morning and see the streets all clear. Our next meeting will be December 12th at 4:30, right here. Thank you.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Turn your mic on.
The Ward Four meeting will be next Tuesday, November 26th, at six o'clock in the Brentwood Forest Clubhouse. It will be the last meeting of the year, so we welcome anyone.
Thank you, Alderman Ploufka.
Thank you, I have three, actually. We were required by Senate Bill Five to become an accredited police force by 2020, or perhaps lose our ability to have a police force independent from the county of St. Louis. And there's a Kalia certification step in that process, kind of a accreditation assessment, a sort of a dry run for the full certification assessment will be conducted next week, beginning Monday, November 26th. And there is a public information session on Tuesday, November 27th, at 5:00 PM. You can make your comments with regard to the Brentwood Police Department's operations, procedures, policies, and support. And if you cannot make that public comment time period, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, from one to three, I believe they're hosting, there's a call-in number that you can find by looking at the City of Brentwood's website and clicking on that, that piece on that front page. I just want to make mention of that, it has been a long and involved process. Anybody that knows anything about certification of this type, it isn't something that's just a few forms and you mail some things in. It's far more complex than that, and I want to credit former Chiefs Fitzgerald and McIntyre for the work that they did getting us to this point, and for the current work by Chief Speace, getting us to accreditation probably a year ahead of schedule. So, thank you for that. Secondly, Public Safety will meet Wednesday, November 28th. We will discuss traffic calming, and maybe have some actual recommendations to talk about in that meeting for some spots that have been under observation and under discussion for the last couple of meetings. We're also going to continue our conversation about the joint study on McKnight Road with Ladue. I don't want to give up on that completely, I still want to talk about that. And then last but not least, this is sort of my shameless plug, this Thursday, the 34th Annual Ameren Thanksgiving Day Parade will feature 10 beauty queens, nine marching bands, eight helium-filled balloons, seven floats with performances from dance groups, including our own Audrey Bartholomew, who was recently on The Voice. We also will have, and this is kind of fun, the Capitol Christmas tree. The tree that is making its way from Oregon, where it was cut down, to where it will stand in front of Congress in another couple of weeks, is going to be in St. Louis on Thanksgiving Day, and is going to be a part of our parade. So, you get to see kind of a piece of history, up close and personal, as it were, if you come down to the Thanksgiving Day Parade on Thanksgiving morning. It is televised on KMOV, but it's a lot more fun in person, and it's going to be great weather, so I would encourage everybody to come on down. It's free, and it's just a lot of fun, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ploufka. Alderwoman Sims?
No report.
Alderman Weggie?
No report.
Thank you. Item nine, City Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Alderman Dimmitt. This week, we are presenting the November 19th City Administrator Update that provides information on Brentwood Bound. Under investment costs and direct project costs, there have been no changes, meaning there have been no additional expenses since the last board meeting on November 5th. However, we have incurred additional expenses under indirect or sunk cost, an additional And these expenses were primarily for survey and work, legal expenses, US Postal Service signage, the Brentwood Bound Open House, and all the printed material that were distributed by the Brentwood Bound Task Force. So, that's the report.
Thank you. Item 10, is this right, another citizen's comment? I'm sorry.
I asked a question of the City Administrator. Madam City Administrator, I heard rumors that we received a grant on Manchester Road.
Yes, we did receive a $1.2 million grant from East West Gateway for Manchester Road Project, so this will go towards amongst many things, the 10-foot shared use span. So, we are delighted, and there's another cycle coming up for us to apply for another grant, so I know I shared that information with Dan last week. And the way things look, we will probably go for the maximum that we can receive, which will probably be close to another $1.2 million grant that we will submit an application for. Thank you.
Thank you. Bola, item 10, citizen comments, is that right?
I think it's wrong. It probably needs to be at the end of the agenda, so if you would agree, Shelley can move it right now.
Any objection on the Board to doing that?
No objection.
Okay, we'll move it.
Item 11, Consent Agenda. There are five items on there, and I'm going to turn it over to Alderman Leahy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bola, on the first item, it's the reallocation of capital funds for the disability for the firehouse. I'm trying to recall, this is something we had nothing in the capital budget to do this year, correct?
That is correct.
So, how can I take money from the leftover mold money, which we also reshuffled around in 2017 to make happen? We're taking that leftover money and helping to make us move forward on potentially cleaning out the lot and getting an elevator in.
So, there are, as you know, additional items that need to be corrected in the firehouse. And we have found that, having completed the mold abatement and the reconstruction of the basement, you know, because the firefighters had to move down to the basement, we have found that there have been savings left. So, instead of just waiting till next year to start that process, that's why we're asking that the Board consider reallocation of the savings, so that we can start to address some of this, this fiscal year.
So, this is all 2018 money?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that was what I was not clear on. Any other questions on, any items on the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, on the, on the firehouse, hey, Bola, is the, is the deliverable, at least the ROM order pricing of how much it's going to cost to put an ADA compliant elevator into the building, or is this just for demolition of the building?
Um, just a minute. It will include that as well.
So, we will have a better estimate of what the total cost will be to remedy the firehouse?
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request if we would at least read by title only the items on the consent agenda before we take a vote. Is that possible?
Well... I think it's out there, I'm not sure why we would be doing that, but, Bola, is this agenda on, on the web?
Yes, it is.
And it shows the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I'm going to deny that request. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer? Alderman Kramer?
I think we lost him. He's froze.
If there was speech, man, I can't hear it.
There we go.
Alderman Kramer?
No.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
And Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
All right, item 12, Old Business. 12A, Bill Number 6225, Ordinance of Many, the Ordinance Number 3619. Chair would entertain a motion to approve Bill Number 6225?
Do we need a second reading first?
I'm sorry, first and second, yeah, second reading, thank you.
Bill Number 6225, second reading and consideration for adoption, Ordinance of Many, the Ordinance Number 3619, which granted a conditional use permit and approved site development plan to McDonald's Corporation for property numbered 1595, South Hanley Road. Second reading and consideration for adoption.
Thank you. Now the Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion to perfect Bill 6225 into ordinance form, please.
Second.
We have a first and second on Bill Number 6225. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neal?
Yes.
Alderman Ploufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
And Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Bill Number 6225 passes, and upon signature of the Mayor, becomes Ordinance Number 4863.
Thank you. Item 13A, Resolution 1084.2. Bola, how do you want to proceed on this?
If you would call Dan Goomersheimer?
Dan, come on down, please.
Good evening, everybody. In front of you is the sewer lateral program, there's a memo, and then some of the attachments would be this resolution, this, we have the original version, then we have the redline version, the changes that we made, just real briefly, would be, after we met with Public Works Committee, we talked about how we could better serve this program and keep it sustained longer, you know, more throughout the year, without going as far over, you know, better balance of the expenditures and the revenues. If you recall, Brentwood Forest, there's several condominium units that were actually out of the program based on statute, which reduced our revenues, and now we're trying to balance the two. So, the current program allows $7,250 max for the aggregate. The current program also allows for cleaning and cabling, which is unique in the sense that if you look at the comparators, which is in the table in your memo, most of the comparators, or pretty much all the comparators, don't actually provide that service. So, what we did, you know, it cost $42,000 rough number last year, and this year it's upwards of $32,000 for cleaning. So, if you had a backup, you would call the hotline, hotline dispatches Gateway Sewer, Gateway Sewer comes out, they cable the line if it's clear, bill goes to Public Works, Public Works codes it, and it goes against this account for this length's contractual services. Those were the two main changes. Didn't know if you had any particular questions about the program, or if you wanted to look at the redline, and what you like, dislike. We were trying to get this, this year, so that moving forward, we can make an effective date, say January 1 or 2, you know, if the Board so desires to make these changes.
Kevin, do we need a motion on this, to approve this resolution?
Yes, sir.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion at this point to...
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's open it up for discussion. Leahy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not in favor, unfortunately, of what we're looking to do. I do understand the value of trying to keep the sewer lines open and stuff, but we're offering a citywide program that we, the city, cannot fiscally afford to keep going. This year, you're going to move $90,000 into the account. With the ceiling caps trying to come down, we're trying to balance it out. I'm sorry, but I think if the cities can't run, cannot afford to run the program, that I don't think it's fair to keep charging residents for something that we can't make functionally work. So, I'm not in favor of renewing this program and setting this up.
Alderman Ploufka?
Can I ask a question of the Alderman?
Sure.
Okay, so, is that, is that your opinion even with the caps that are in place here? And I, I understand the shortfalls now are based in some part on what we've already indebted ourselves to do, and what we already have planned to do. Is it your understanding, looking at this, that even going forward, we can't financially sustain it with the money that's coming in?
I believe we'll run a deficit spending in the year 2019 budget also.
Even at 3,500 cap, and even at no for cleanouts? Can I ask whether or not the other Aldermen that are in that committee that talked about that discussion, you share that opinion? Is that, I mean, is there...
Alderman Lockmiller, go ahead.
Thanks.
I don't, no, I don't share the opinion. Voters, at some point, voted to have this tax put upon them to do this, for us to implement this program. We're just trying to keep this program afloat till the state legislatures, legislators do something to allow us to raise the revenue that we need. But in the meantime, we're just trying to keep spending down to keep this a balanced program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or, Mr. Chairman.
Alderwoman Sims?
I had some questions. The redline isn't showing up on my, on what I have, so, is the...
Yes, open it in Word.
Well, I, just, perhaps for, just getting through what I'd like to say, you're proposing, is the resolution would, would make the repair amount 3,000, how much?
3,500.
3,500?
Yeah.
And then you would do away with the cabling?
Right, cabling and cleaning would be 100% responsibility of the property owner.
What happens in this year with regard to the people, when we, we had it at 7,200, and there was that shift, so, so are we going back to the people who were expecting to have a $7,200 amount paid?
My recommendation is we keep them under the old program until such program changes are made by the Board. If you agree with this, then calls at some effective date, we would need to set an effective date. If you want to keep the old policy through the end of the year, the end of the month, you know, I would suggest that there's a cutoff date, so that going forward, any calls after such date falls under this new program. But right now, if someone's called in, I would think it would be fair to keep them under the 7,250, just because that's what's on the web. You know, that's what we pushed out back in April, May.
If, if this passes?
If this passes, then...
Is that, was that what happens?
If this passes, then I would think we would need to put in some effective date. You know, do you want to make it effective December 1, or January 1? I would suggest January, just because you could, you know, put it on social media, put it on the website, that gives time to roll forward these changes. And last time, we put a letter with it, you know, but it's up to you.
Okay, that, so that was a question, and I have a comment, I'm, I am not for this. I, you know, I sit on the Ways and Means Committee, we have, you know, $60 million in revenue. I think the idea that we can't afford a sewer lateral program, it just isn't supported by the numbers. You know, if a lateral line goes out, and it's $10,000, that house faces condemnation. We have citizens that are relying on this benefit. You know, I, I think that, you know, I would support doing away with the cabling, but I think that at the very least, we should keep the cap where it is. You know, I think it's been discussed before that the overwhelming source of these collapsed line is root growth, it's not someone flushing items down, you know, willy-nilly down their lateral. You know, and, and this is, we, in particular in my world, we have old homes, old plumbing, these things, I'm just, I'm thinking of someone on a fixed income, looking at something that, you know, would cost substantially more than $3,500. And we have the money, I mean, it's, you know, we, we have the money. And I think if we're going to spend, you know, $300,000 on tennis courts, you know, we're not going to fund Brentwood Bound on the backs of the sewer lateral program, and then kind of, you know, modest cut that we would make. And that would, you know, the, the cut would, I think, would disproportionately burden people who have less resources, who live on fixed incomes. This is a program that we've had for several years, you know, to, to, to find a cost savings here. I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not for it, I know that, I think there's been some discussion that maybe this could be a rider by insurance. I called my insurance adjuster, and he said that that were my insurance broker, excuse me, you know, he said that there was a rider for cabling, but not, you know, not the lateral. I didn't go further than that, but, you know, I don't, I don't think that this, you know, this is a benefit that we provide. We provide a lot of other benefits too, and I think if we're going to, you know, tighten our belt, this isn't, this isn't the place to do it. So, I will be voting no on this.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I tend to side, to a certain extent, with Alderwoman Sims. This topic has come up numerous times in the past, and one item that I feel like we've lost focus on is the service to the citizens of our city. We do have sizable budgets that are accessible, and as well, there is this issue of the cleanouts possibly being abused by some of the residents. And one of the considerations that was never reviewed, or brought up for consideration, was the possibility of having a limit per household of one cleanout per year, instead of two, or three, or four, five. The, the actual system that was put in place to manage this whole program, going back in time, was probably ill-fated at best. Kind of managing the labor hours from various departments, and moving things around the budgets to try to make it work out. The philosophical issue of whether or not we will subsidize this program, I don't know if that has a legal implication. I'm opposed to this the way that it's currently written, but there is one side to show, I wanted to make you aware of, and that is, I have checked the St. Louis County Tax Assessment for the $50 versus $25 split that we were going to do for Brentwood Forest. That revenue right now is coming in as it did last year, there's no $25 splits that I've been able to see, so they're all going to be 50s, whether you're upstairs or downstairs. I'm not sure how that's going to impact the budget, or some of that money's going to have to be put into escrow for potential recruit by the, the folks in Brentwood Forest, and I guess that's between Brentwood Forest and County. But I wanted to make sure you're aware of that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Kramer. Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, just a, a point of clarification, so when we say we will no longer cover the cabling fee, that's only when there is not a, an issue with the lateral... So when we say we will no longer cover the cabling fee, that's only when there is not a, an issue with the lateral, correct? So if there's a blockage that is not caused by the structural failure?
Defective.
Hold on, Alderman Weggie, we're getting that answer for you.
Thanks.
The way it was written was that it wouldn't cover it, period, that it's normal homeowner's responsibility, that it's just part of, you know, wear and tear, basically.
So even if the lateral is found to be deficient, collapsed, the homeowner would still be responsible for the cost of the cabling, but then we would cover the repairs up to 3,500?
Right, yeah, to keep it on par with the comparators, but I see what you're saying. If you wanted to change it, trying to think how best to do that, I would still make it their responsibility. If you wanted to reimburse them if it's truly defective, I guess you could reword it that way. But under normal circumstances, if it's wiped, if it's roots, then it would be just a normal maintenance issue. But if it were a collapse, you know, a true defect such as that? Because these could range anywhere, the cheapest is $95 for one hour, most of them are in the hundreds if you get into overtime situation like a weekend.
Alderman Kramer?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Alderman Weggie, are you done?
No, thank you.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just, I wanted to bring up, I attended the Public Works Committee meeting where this was discussed, and I thought the motion wording included the word defective, so that there was an exclusion for access to that cabling the way that motion was written for those items that were defective. For example, a root versus a flushable wipe.
Let's bring in Alderman Lockmiller, he might be able to shed some light.
Yeah, I think that was my understanding, if the cabling detected that there was a defect that needed to be repaired, then that cabling cost was credited towards the repairs, so it would be up and above this 3,500 in this case. So if cabling was $100, then they would be reimbursed. $3,500 plus $100 cabling.
Okay.
That was my understanding. And then, Dan, I have a question. What's our average cost of one of these repairs?
We've been averaging roughly $4,700 with pipe solutions. When we did it in-house, it was, you know, the labor, of course, really isn't accounted for because it's already counted for with streets. So we were looking at it just from a material standpoint and some labor, and that was, say, $2,000 to $3,000 if we did pipe patches.
That's kind of what we're looking here. This is somewhat of an insurance policy, and we thought setting the cap at 3,500 would be like a copay way health insurance is, where the homeowner's paying with a portion, a smaller portion of the repair, and we're picking up the 3,500.
Yeah, in some cities, if you read the memo, do a split, or it could be 70, 30, 20, 80, you know, something to that extent. But that wasn't the desire of the Public Works meeting, it was strictly a repair expense up to a ceiling, not a split.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I'll just weigh in, I, I agree with Alderwoman Sims on this. I think that while this doesn't effectively kill the program, I think it comes pretty close to effectively killing it. And, you know, if we're going to take that drastic of an approach, I would like to give as much notice and warning to the residents as possible. So my preference is to, as Alderwoman Sims said, we, you know, we funded it, the shortfall last year, we're going to fund it this year to the tune of about $95,000, and the projection is $90,000 for next year. My, my feeling is we go ahead and do that for 2019, but in conjunction with that, either figure out how to fix this program, because we're, we're taking in $50 in, as a premium, if you will, acting like an insurance company, but we're not acting like an insurance company, because we're not turning around and doing anything with that $50. We're simply paying that out, and there's no insurance company that would stay in business if that's how they, they operated. So we, you know, we've got the worst of both worlds there, and, you know, my feeling would be that we continue with this program as is, and we fund the shortfall for 2019, but at the same time, we take some efforts to either fix this program or we educate the public immediately that there's a real likelihood that this is going to come to an end, simply because it's not a viable program, if we don't want to continue to, to fund the shortfall. And the other thing that I would add is, you know, Alderman Weggie did some legwork, and, you know, he found with his insurance company that they do provide a rider for $23 a year in a $500 deductible. You can get a lateral program. I called my agent, and I found the exact same thing. So that, you know, that's considerably cheaper, $23 instead of $50 with the $500 deductible. But, you know, that, that's, I, I guess what I'm saying is I think there might be some fixes out there. I'm just opposed to making this change right now, because I'm just concerned about the folks who in 2019 end up having this, this need for this repair, and, you know, they just can't come up with the funds to do that. Alderwoman O'Neil?
Thank you, I, I have listened to both sides, there are, there are a couple of different things here. I am concerned about the people who use the program multiple times for wipes, or grease, or whatever it is. I'd like the idea of saying you are responsible for the first 95 for the cleaning, if that's what it turns out to be. If it is roots, that's a different proposition. But it sounds like we're not only offering insurance, we're saying, go ahead and, and do things that are not ecologically sound, and we'll bail you out. So I have an issue with that part of it. If we could reinstitute or reword something, I think I would be more in favor of that.
Are you willing to make an amendment?
Sure, if I can figure out how to word it.
We have some breaking news that I just heard from city attorney Kevin O'Keefe regarding what state statute allows the city to do with general fund money.
Okay.
For this program.
Statutes create an exception to the general principle that public funds are only spent on public property and for public purposes, and allow the city to create this insurance program, and it took a state law to authorize it, to repair private sewer ladders. The purpose, obviously, being to protect the public health, but it is nonetheless a repair to private property, and it is the exception to the general principle that public funds are to be spent for public goods, not private property. So I think it is perfectly valid to loan money to the sewer lateral fund, to get it over a hard spot or a program, with an intent to repay with interest to the general fund, whatever is there. But I don't think that there is state authorization for the city to expend general revenue funds for the purpose of repairing the private property of homeowners, sewer ladders. So why don't we revisit this whole thing, and, and I'd be happy to work with Dan and some of the comments that have been made tonight, and see if there's another approach we might bring back.
So is it the opinion of, of the attorney that we're okay with what we've done in the past? Does it have to be termed as a, as a no?
I, I think so. I, I think it is, it is a support for the program, but I would expect it is carried as an obligation for repayment to the general fund.
Alderman Lockmiller?
And I apologize, I was not aware of the intricacies of the funding, I apologize.
I guess I would make a motion that we could take this back to the Public Works Committee and work with our city attorney.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You have a motion on the floor already. That would have to be withdrawn in order to have the new motion entertained.
Unless it's treated as a motion to table.
But he didn't, yeah.
All right. Do you care to make it a motion to table?
Sure would.
And we have a motion to table resolution 1084.2?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need a vote on that? Alderman, or, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
All right, roll call, please, Shelley, and this is just simply to table resolution 1084.2.
And I assume you'll refer it to Public Works pending restoration to the board's agenda?
And to send it back to Public Works. Roll call, please.
Alderman Demmett?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
No.
All right. Item 13B, new business, Bill number 6226, first reading, please.
Bill number 6226, first reading, and ordinance authorizing and approving the recycling, recycling processing services agreement, say that three times fast, between the City of Brentwood and Republic Services Environmental LLC.
Thank you. Do you have some presentation, Dan, on this?
Yes, in this particular one, we brought this through Public Works Committee, we vetted out several different options. Basically, it's come down to Republic Services is the only company that still operates a materials recycling facility in St. Louis. We used to take it to Resource Management, they closed our doors. There's no other community that still does hauling that has a big enough facility, with the exception of St. Peters, and St. Peters entered into a contract with Lake St. Louis and O'Fallon, Missouri. So they're about at capacity, and that didn't look promising for us, because at that time, you'd have to dual sort paper separate from all your other recycled goods. It's a longer drive. You know, logistically, it just became too difficult to deal with that. And then now they're, you know, joined with their, you know, neighboring communities. So Republic Services gave us a contract, city attorney redlined it, we sent it back. The person that does their contracts is on vacation last week, he returns this week. So we're hopeful that the changes that the city attorney made can be adopted. And then one of the other things, which isn't in the redline, but we did send to them, would be the change to term to one year instead of three years as the base. That way, if the economy improves, and suddenly these become viable again and profitable, we can, you know, get out of that contract, especially if there's a new materials facility that opens up. Now, they, they think that the, the market's going to drive itself, such that because there is a monopoly and it's by Republic, someone else is going to come into St. Louis and open up another shop, so to speak.
Questions for Dan? Alderwoman Sims?
What happens if we don't have a recycling program?
We have to, per the county code. If we're our own hauler, which we are, we either have to have a transfer facility where people can take it to, or we have to offer some sort of recycling.
So we have to do something?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're on that sort of rock.
And we have budgeted in 2019 the increase.
Correct, and we also applied for some grants, hopefully we get those, we'll hear back here shortly. But the 115 per ton, that's the raw cost, which is loaded in there, but then we'll also get some of the revenue split. So if we sold steel, or aluminum, or whatever the recovered material is, we'll get a portion. It's 80% for us and 20% for Republic.
Essentially, it's an additional $51,000 in 2019.
Right.
That could be reduced either by this grant, as well as any revenue that we get from selling any of these recycled products.
Yeah, because the grant, the way it was explained to us, is it's $25,000 one-time deal where it's over a six-month period. And then after that, it goes away, but, you know, we would get some of that money back, hopefully. Pretty hopeful that we'll get that.
And did you say it's a one-year contract, or is it still a three-year contract?
We reworded it such that it's one year, that's what we sent back to Republic.
Okay.
I think that they would accept it only because they know that Kirkwood did a one-year with it.
Okay.
My question also is that by the time of the second reading, do you think we'll have a contract back from Republic?
I believe so, yeah, because the person that normally handles it, he was gone last week. I know this is a short week, but I know on his voice message, it said that he'd be returning today sometime. So now I know he's kind of digging his way out of the hole.
Any other questions for Dan? Alderman Weggie?
Yeah, just, just as a point that came up in the committee meeting. So we will make more money if our residents do a better job of recycling in terms of, you know, food waste on, on plastic, et cetera. And so, Dan, just to reaffirm that we will be starting an education program with our residents on the right way to recycle, what the correct materials are, to try and maximize that yield if we go forward with this plan, correct?
That is correct, yes. The, the, basically, Republic told us that because people don't necessarily know better, almost 30% of what's received is rejected, because there is too much contamination. So if you can somehow reduce the contamination, in theory, you know, you've got a better quality recyclable material that can be sold.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan on this item? Thank you, Dan. We have no closed meeting. Item 15. You have a public comment, though, I think. Oh, I'm sorry, we moved that, didn't we, yeah, it's not showing up. Thank you, Alderman Plufka, I guess, citizen comment. Anybody in the audience care to address the board? Now is your time. Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.